Court Town Council meeting, June 13th, the order roll call. Paul Bissonette?
Here.
Well, first, Mark Eastman is absent. Paul's here. David Key?
Here.
Dan Orsby?
Here.
Paul Galvin?
Yep.
And Peter Stewart is on Cruz. First, any presentation, any town council recognition? Do we have anything? None there. Consideration of the minutes of previous meetings. How do we want to handle those?
Will you approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the previous meetings. Any comment? All those in favor? It's approved? Vote. Consider, let me see, receive and review correspondence and documents. First one, the only one listed there is Bucksport Police Response to Town of Verona 51919.
Yes, the Sheriff's Office requested that the police check on a potential jumper on the Penobscot Narrows Bridge and the on-duty patrolmen responded to that call, found the bridge to be clear, and the individual was later found at Circle K in Bucksport. But this is just the report on that as required by our agreement.
Any comments?
Chief, how often are we going over there?
Oh, a few times a month. Or once a month, this is getting more frequent.
Is it? Okay. No, I mean, I didn't mean it as a bad thing.
No, no, I know. It's kind of a little bit more than usual.
Has it? Okay.
Yeah.
Anything else? Moving on to item number six, ordinance to consider or introduce the first reading of Appendix K, Sections 8 dot 53, 13 dot 4, 13 dot 15, 8 dot 2, 15 dot 5 dot 1, and 11 dot 6.
Our court officer is here to explain these.
Do you mean?
Amy Jeff.
This ordinance originated from a request made by Mayor Stewart and the Regulatory Review Committee, and the primary purpose of the ordinance is to change the size of a parking lot space. Along with that, though, there are a couple of other changes that are proposed, some of which should have been made the last round but were overlooked, and there's one additional change that I'll explain to when we get to it. I'll put it up on the screen, so if anybody wants to be able to see that, you can. Why that's so dark? Is that acceptable?
Yeah. It's one of them.
All right, so the first change, Section 8 has all the land uses described and lists all the, they described the categories and all the uses in the categories. When we changed schools in the last amendment to Appendix K, we eliminated all the ones that are, you've seen, are being lined out here, post-secondary, private school, public schools. Those are all taken out of the ordinance. This was missed, so it was a minor part of the ordinance that we just didn't get to. So this is a corrective edit for that. And the same in Section 13. Section 13 contains specific use standards that might apply to any given land use, and those names that were taken out in the last amendment were left here, so this amendment will take care of that by changing everything just as simply schools. And next one is Section 13, 15, 82. This is where the change is being made to the size of the parking space. Currently, it's 10 by 20. The proposed change is 9 feet by 18 feet. That was a request made by Mayor Stewart. That's pretty standard parking lot size. And Section 15, 51, this, the Section 15 contains all the review criteria that the Board, the Planning Board goes through after they complete their application review, they make findings, and we added one additional standard under the Public Safety Group that pertains to accessibility of buildings, and the criterion for that was left out, so this is being added in this amendment. It deals with the accessibility of public buildings or property. And the last one, this one came about after the Planning Board reviewed the proposed changes that I've just gone through up to now, and during the public hearing, I brought this to them because it came about as a result of information that I became aware of about the cost of a Planning Board review fee for projects coming out for whole oceans. That review fee, as currently required, is going to be in the neighborhood of $17,000. Their building permit fee will be in the neighborhood of $11,000. So I went in and looked at our fee schedule, and first of all, realized that it really doesn't need to be in Appendix K because in the Schedule of Fees already, we put it there when that schedule was adopted a little while ago. So this amendment essentially deletes everything in Section 11.6, including the calculations for determining a permit fee, and mentioning of special meeting fees, that's again in the Schedule of Fees. Language requiring when a fee needs to be paid, which really isn't necessary, I don't believe, to have that in there. Service fees for stenography, audio, or video, that's not likely to happen because we provide that service now as part of the town services. So the, all those words have been reduced to the underlying language, 11.6, any application for a land use permit must include a review fee, which is identified in the town's Schedule of Fees, as adopted by the Bucksport Town Council. 11.6.1, the review fee is intended to cover the town's administrative costs of an application review, including but not limited to photocopies, published notices, mailings, consultants, special meetings, and legal assistance. 11.6.2, any portion of a review fee remaining after completion of review shall be applied to additional town permit fees required for the approved project. 11.6.3, application review fees may not be refunded. So all these changes were reviewed by the Planning Board, and they, by the way, they determined that this additional proposed amendment regarding the fees did not require another public notice, and so they reviewed it at the public hearing that was scheduled. And they approved everything that you've seen here and are recommending it to be adopted by the town council. This will be your first reading this evening, and then you'll be holding a second reading, and you may schedule a public hearing if you want to. Any questions?
I have a question. On the review fee?
Yeah.
$17,000?
Yeah, if you use the multipliers in the Appendix K and the Schedule of Fees, that's what it comes out at, based on the cost of the project.
Wow, okay.
So my thought is that you may want to spend some time looking at the Schedule of Fees and seeing if anything might be appropriate to change there, including but not limited to putting a cap on fees.
Now, is it because their project is so large? Or is it?
Yeah. Yeah, it's.
Yeah, that's, that's a lot, that's a lot of money for the Planning Board just to review it. I'm assuming that's what it's for, right?
Right, but it would cover any additional cost they might incur, like I just described, consultant fees or special meetings, or if they need legal help. That would be taken out of those fees, but $17,000 is extremely high for any Planning Board review, I believe.
It sounds it to me. I guess, it's the first I've heard of such. I mean, I guess it's the first project of that magnitude, too, but.
Well, I asked our court officer about the prior fees for mill projects and what those, the nature of those costs that would have been proportionately, they're, they're the same, it's just the size of the dollar value of what we're talking about. The only concern becomes, and it becomes a, is that if we don't re, if the, it's a review cost, and we are retaining more than the cost is of the review, that, that we really need to either rethink that portion of this, the no refund, or take a hard look at what the actual costs of these reviews are, so that we make sure that we're not, I mean, this, this is all based on how it has been done and how we've done that, but if, if the cost of the review is $10,000, and we've taken seven, and they've paid their other fees, there's no other permit fees that we're going to have that are going to rise to the level of that amount of money that, that we'd be applying it to, but.
I mean, can we change the wording on refund?
Well, that's just, if you do away with that provision, and to flip your example, if we've charged 10, and it ended up costing seven, isn't there, it should at least be up for consideration.
Yeah, some wiggle room up and up.
Right.
Right.
Dan, did you have a, did you?
I mean, I think maybe looking at them, too, to, you know, because we got, you know, not only them, but, you know, MMA, you know, they're going to have a project down there, and, you know, we've had the ones out at the industrial park, so they've had to pay a fee, I'm assuming.
Yes.
You know.
Nowhere near those 70.
Well, yeah, I mean, they're not as large, but I mean.
It sounds like there's some interest in looking at not only the Schedule of Fees, but also whether or not some leeway can be applied to 11.63 on the refunding.
The no refund policy is consistent with our building ordinance. There, the building ordinance also has a provision that does not allow refund of fees. So one of the reasons for that thing is because, and we've seen this happen, is when you, when you, an applicant pays a fee, and the application review crosses over into a new fiscal year, it makes refunding more challenging, I think, for bookkeeping purposes. So the decision was made at some point in time, I don't recall when, but the decision was made to stop doing that, stop refunding fees.
What committee would this go to review? Is this just the council level fee of finance?
Finance, I would think.
What would go to?
In terms of looking at the fees, the fee piece of this, or this piece?
It's regulatory review is the.
Does it stay with regulatory review to look at this piece of it?
Yeah, I would suggest you, you look at your Schedule of Fees, where, you know, the same things that we're looking at tonight are there already.
Yeah, I guess I'm asking, does it, does it stay with regulatory review to do that, or does it go to Finance Committee?
That would be regulatory review.
Okay.
I mean, in the grand scheme of things, you know, 250 million, 17,000, you know, it's dropping a bucket, but still, that adds, you know, and it, I just think 17 for a project is.
For permitting.
Permitting, right, and just for us to review it, it's extremely high.
In the past 20 years, I think the most expensive application review that the Planning Board has had is the gas turbine project, I'm sorry, $40 million. I don't recall what the fee was, but it was, it was up there, but Whole Oceans is a unique, a unique project that we may never see the likes of again, but.
Or hope not. Well, I mean, you know, I mean, hopefully they stay. At least my lifetime.
Okay, any other questions from the council? But the public, any questions from the public on this?
Just a thought, I know that Don White Town Farm Road, I know this goes to, goes to, goes to committee is what I just heard, but I'm wondering about if you, if the town would be liable if there was a contestment or contested, you got lawyers involved, you got multiple things have, the town has gone through that before, and I just wonder about the language to give the town, instead of putting a hard cap on it, if, if, if in the future, and I know it's not imminent, but if in the future you got, you got lawyers and you got time involved, then your costs can run up, and so I would hope that the committee would consider that.
More flexibility.
Yeah, more flexibility as opposed to just.
Thanks, Tom. Anything else? All right. We'll move to the item seven, discussion items, Regulatory Review Committee update. Do we have anything there?
Well, there was originally scheduled to have a Regulatory Review Committee meeting tonight for the purpose of the Single Use Bag Committee presenting to the Regulatory Review, and at their request, that has been put off until discussion of the council meeting on the 27th. The, the House and Senate have sent a bill to Governor Mills for signature, or veto, whichever way it goes, that creates a statewide single-use bag prohibition that would go into effect in 2020, and that bill, unlike some state regulations which allow communities to be more strict than state statute, preempts local authority on this subject, meaning that the town has no regulatory, would have no regulatory opportunity if this bill is signed, and so it's, the discussion of what happens with it was, the veto date or the date in which it would become law is the 16th, and so we're just waiting until after that date to see what direction this goes before the committee. Regardless, if it is adopted, if the governor signs it or doesn't sign it and it goes into law, anything other than a veto, the committee will still have information for the council at their meeting on the 27th about the results of the work that they did and the surveys that they did, and all of that kind of information.
All right. Item eight, we're going to skip down, we've got some resolves to approval, we've got to go to some public, public meetings first, so we're going to skip down to the public hearing, item 12. We'll start with the general fund budget. Open a public hearing, Sue.
The, the budget as proposed is the one that the council spent several months reviewing It should result in no mill rate increase in this year. It maintains services in all departments, doesn't, I don't know what the hell is it, maintains services allows the council and the departments to work on the projects that have been identified as priorities for the coming year.
We'll open it for public comment. Any, any comments on the general fund budget? Everybody likes the idea of no mill rate increase. Anything from the council? We just need to keep going down through the list. So the next one is the sewer budget, item B.
This budget is, again, doesn't include a sewer rate increase. The last rate increase was in 2015, when the town was looking at the construction of the sewer treatment facility. That, that rate is still sufficient to maintain this, and although it's contained in my manager's report, I will, I will say it now that the issues related to the solar array at the treatment plant have been resolved. We've received a clearance letter from Maine Historic Preservation Commission, and revision will be moving forward with the installation of the array as proposed, which should result in next year's budget, in a reduction of up to $25,000 in the electrical line item for this budget, so that's good news.
Any comments from the public on that item?
I had one question on the, it's my understanding that the more, the more water we use, and if the existing users stay the same, we should see a decrease for any of the costs?
The, the cost of the, the cost of the facility isn't going to go down, the revenue from users goes up the more water.
Right.
Because it's based on water using, so the more customers that we get.
So with whole oceans, we should.
Whole oceans is, will have their portable water and sewer through us, the water for the facility itself is through agreement with AIM as a purchase of the water for that, but the addition of Greenhead Lobster and the Muscle Farm to those will provide a significant additional to the sewer, so that that will help, you know, in raising the amount of fees that we receive, the costs for operation don't go down, but the more that you're processing, the, the more affordable it becomes to operate.
Any, any other comments from the council? Okay, if not, we'll go to item C, the Marina budget.
The Marina operations, this budget includes an additional staff person. They, they tried to do this with just two people last year, and when you're running a seven-day-a-week operation, that's a lot to ask over the course of the summer, and so they've added a new, another person who has started at the facility. There's been some challenges early this year with the gap system that have had to be addressed. Fortunately, I think we're on track to have that pretty much up and running, and once that is, is done, it will allow us to move forward with the grant for the diesel installation, which was during that process that we discovered that the gas situation had issues, but they've been resolved, and the diesel will be as well. And I'll take right now as an opportunity to also congratulate Mike Orsby and Rich Rotella. They've attained another, Mike wrote the grant, Rich wrote the supporting letter for another harbor grant for the engineering planning for the permanent dock system for our town dock, so good work.
Thank you. Looks great down there, Tom.
I wanted to say also that the general public, I remember when they were asked what they felt was important in the town, Marina was always really at the top of the list as far as perhaps some expansion and what it could do for our future, and I don't want us to lose sight of that, that I think that if we're going to put some more money into anything down the road, that could be a good place to put it.
Funny, Mr. Key, I was actually asking, I was going, I wanted to ask about expansion. I actually missed this, the meeting on this budget, and I know last year we had talked about possibly adding fingers, maybe, you know, and making it a little bigger, as big as, you know, not too big, but it's, you know, a little bigger. I ate dinner down by the dock, the town dock, last week, and I was really impressed with how it looks. It looks great down there. You guys have done a great job.
Thank you.
I echo that. I walk there a lot, and it looks, it looks great. I love the new piece of the, going down to the wharf.
The pier itself.
Yeah, pier itself.
Yeah, come up really good.
Excellent.
Yeah, we just had the electrician finish that up because all the electrical stuff was too low, because the new pier was duller. He just did it last Saturday, so it's all, all set now.
Any other comments from the public? And then any other council comments? All right, that, then, item D then, is the capital improvement budget.
This is just the appropriations into the reserve accounts that are included in the other budget, but it identifies their, where they would be deposited, and then their
Any comments on that? Council? Continue the public hearing down through these next two?
Um, no, those are.
Okay, so we'll close, we'll close the public hearing.
And then go back to.
All right, we're going to close the public hearing right now, go back to item eight, agenda items, now we're going to approve the resolve, 2019 51 to approve the 2019 20 general fund budget.
It's a vote.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any comments from the public? Council, all in favor? It's a vote. Item B, approve resolve 2019 52 to approve the 2019 20 sewer budget.
It's a vote.
We've got a motion and a second to approve the sewer budget. Any comments? Council, all in favor? Opposed, I should say opposed each time, but it's a vote. Down to the resolve 2019 53 to approve the 2019 20 Marina budget.
It's a vote. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments, discussion on the Marina budget? Hearing none. All those in favor? Opposed? It's a vote. Item D, approve the resolve 2019 54 to approve the 2019 20 capital improvement budget.
It's a vote. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the budget. Any comments from the public? Council, all in favor? Opposed? It's a vote. Item E, approve the resolve 2019 55 to approve the 2019 20 interest rates for unpaid taxes.
The recommendation in the resolve is 4%. The maximum rate of interest right now that can be charged is 7%. Since the mill closure, the, the town has dropped that, that interest rate to be paid by 3% to mitigate the impact on that. The recommendation is to continue that process at 4% instead of regulatory 7%.
Motion.
Second.
And a second to approve the 4% interest rate for unpaid taxes. Any discussion? Council, all in favor? Opposed? It's a vote. Item F, approve resolve 2019 56 to set the date when taxes are due and payable.
This establishes that taxes for 1920 are due and payable on July 1st of 2019. Yet, the town allows the payment of them without interest in two separate halves, the first half being due on, at the, on August 30, 30th, and the second half being due on March 30, 31st of the following year. That what this due date does is govern when liens can be placed within one year, which is why lien placement, the 30-day notices go out in May of the year following July 1. It's within the 12-month period. There's a lot of misunderstanding about due dates on taxes. The taxes are due when the bill, and the, at the beginning of the year. The town's collection practice is that half are due at. The town's collection practice is that half are due at the end of August and half are due at the end of March. But it, that's not the due date, that's the collection date with, to avoid interest. And we, we just recently did 30-day notices and I've had more questions about why we can issue a 30-day notice if the second half of taxes was due in, um, at the end of March. And that the reason is because the actual due date on the taxes is July 1. It's just, uh, it's just allowed to be paid in two separate pieces, so. More information than anyone needs, but I've had a lot of questions on this, I do every time we send out 30-day notices.
Motion approved, second.
Motion second, to, to establish the date when taxes due and payable, as discussed. Any discussion on that, comments? Council? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? It's a vote. And the last item G, approve resolve 2019-57 to set sewer rates for the period of 7/119 to 6/30/20.
And this sets the sewer user rate at $9.29 per 100 cubic feet, which is the same as it's been since 2015.
Motion approved, second.
Motion is second to set the sewer rates for 7/119 to 6/30/20, any discussion? Council? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Vote. Item nine, resignations, appointments, assignments, and elections. None there. Uh, item 10, approval of quick claims, discharges, and deeds. We have two, uh, items. Item A is Nadine Layton, map 30, uh, map three, lot 18, 2018 tax lien. Just a vote.
Yes, just, just needs a motion.
Need a motion? Motion?
Second.
We have a motion, a second on, uh, item A. Map three, lot 18, 2018 tax lien. Any discussion? Council, all in favor? Opposed? It's a vote. And B is Duane Weston, map 29, lot 11, 2017 sewer lien.
Make a motion. Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? And opposed? It's a vote. Moving on to item 11, town manager report.
Okay, some of it's already been done during the budget, but, um, the fire chief interview process is progressing. First interviews are being conducted this week, second interviews will be scheduled for next week. And I am in hopes to make a recommendation to the council for appointment by the 1st of July. The Maine Port Authority annual meeting will be held on, in Bucksport on Monday. This group will be meeting at the town office and we are pleased that they have chosen Bucksport for this year's annual meeting. Thanks to Rich Rotella for coordinating this on behalf of the town. I'll be speaking at the National AARP Livability Conference next Thursday in Portland about the bus taxi arrangement we have for public transportation in Bucksport. And I've been asked to participate in a panel discussion on local government on WERU on Friday, June 21st. The Dirigo Speaks session at the Alamo last week had an audience of around 50 people in person and was videotaped for posting on the Bangor Daily News site. I've had some positive feedback about that. I'm pleased to note that Searsport has contracted with Bucksport for use of our animal shelter. This helps to offset the revenue loss that occurred when Hamden withdrew from the shelter. And finally, um, congratulations to the graduating seniors on their accomplishment of receiving their high school diploma. The ceremony is tomorrow evening and we wish them all the best as they move on in the next chapter of their lives.
Any discussion, comments, and questions on the manager's report? All right, hearing none, we'll drop down to, I think it was item E, 12E, right? Festival and Public Entertainment License Application, Pixie Harbor Hoopla, Bucksport Bay Area Chamber of Commerce, June 16, uh, June 16, 2019.
Motion approved, second.
Yeah, the motion is second. Any discussion? The council, all in favor? Opposed? It's a vote. And item F is a liquor license renewal. Carriers mainly lobster, 10 State Route 46.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It's a vote.
We need signatures, hold on.
I am locked up here for some reason. Okay, uh, item G is liquor license renewal of Ronar Wine and Design LLC, 77 Main Street, Suite 1A.
Motion approved, second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Vote. And item 13, discussion of items not on the agenda for council and public, we'll go to the public first, does anybody have anything? Counsel?
I just had one question.
The amount that they're estimated to be using wouldn't require until sometime years from now in an expansion for them, for any potential pull through from Alamosa Cortati. That there, there's not.
They're not gonna open that up.
That.
To regulate.
To regulate.
Or make sure that Silver Lake doesn't get too low.
Well, the, the, the idea is that they're, that the amount that they're estimated to use isn't gonna impact that in a way that, but they're, the agreement for purchase requires Whole Oceans, um, to help maintain that infrastructure so that, that is.
I, I was hoping that they were gonna, you know, open gates and start circling that water a little bit. It helps fishing, so, you're saying.
It was.
Any other council comments?
I just wanna add to what Sue said about Dirigo Speaks, I attended that. It was a, a great session and, um, certainly made me proud to have Sue Lasard as our town manager. She did an outstanding job in that panel discussion. Uh, Richard Rosen, uh, was there, did an excellent job, it was just a great, if anything, to me, it was, uh, it was another jumpstart to keep us motivated, keep us fired up about what's going on in town, all the great things that we're doing as a community. And I think we need that every now and then to remind ourselves that, you know, it's, um, there's, there's a lot of people, there, there are a lot of people working in a lot of different directions, doing a lot of wonderful things, from the Marina to, you know, the Heart and Soul groups and all the groups that are going on, the town, um, public works, the town employees, and, and all the volunteers. So it, um, we may have been speaking a little bit to our sort of ancillar crowd. I'm hoping that maybe we could get something like that at, at a, you know, Bangor Chamber, maybe they could, uh, host us at the Bangor Chamber of Commerce so we can get our story even further out there. But it was, it was a super event, so congratulations, Sue, you did a great job that night.
That, uh, that was item 13. Item 14, set infrastructure committee meeting for 6/27/19.
Yes, uh, there are several items that we need to discuss on that. We've had, um, one is request related to the purchase of property and notification of butters, of butters for that. Another, um, but we also need to schedule regulatory review if you wanna look at the fee schedule before you go any further down the road with that. The idea of, of doing the no refund or, or how you wanna treat the fees in regard to that.
Maybe one at 6, one at 6:30?
One at 6, and one at 6:30.
6:15, what?
Well, I'm, I think I'm on the infrastructure, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah.
If we could do that one at 6:30, that'd be great.
Who is on that?
'Cause I don't think I'm on the other one.
I think I'm the chair of that one.
Yeah. So 6 is regulatory review. 6:30.
We did a joint economic development and, um, infrastructure as well, which we were gonna.
That's right.
You wanna just move the regulatory to the next meeting after that?
Yeah, we, that, that item was.
What's that?
That we can wait on that item a little.
You can wait on that.
Regulatory review.
Wait for the next meeting.
So do infrastructure slash.
Economic development.
Economic development.
At 6.
At 6 o'clock, yes.
Thanks.
With the understanding that Mr. Dogg might be a little late.
It might be. We're doing it at 6 or 5:30?
6.
6. That will work, Rich.
We can start, maybe we can start the, are there gonna be one and the same, or we're gonna, we'll start the economic development first, whatever that is?
It's to discuss the 10 for Whole Oceans.
Okay.
That's why it's a joint.
Okay.
Am I on, are we doing both that night, one at 5:30?
We're gonna, no, we're gonna do the other one the next meeting.
Perfect, outstanding. That'd be great.
Okay, the last item, item 15 is adjournment.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Vote.